Twenty fifth of May, two thousand and twenty five.
Twenty seventh of May.
Twenty seventh of May, it's twenty twenty four. Twenty twenty five at six thirty P M in the petition of National Grid, Verizon, New England, request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the public way, that being Charity Hill Road. The hearing is open, and you, sir, I believe.
Ken Kriegel from National Grid. And we're looking to install one new Jordan Leon pole on Charity Hill Road, number two dash fifty, about four hundred and seventy feet north of the centerline of Old Petersham Road for a new service to Eagle Hill School.
Thank you. Anybody want to say anything about this? Anybody for or against?
Mr. Chair, you'll see that the butters were notified, and it was posted in accordance with the law.
Okay. Thank you. Questions? Just curious what constructions going on?
They're having underground primary to a pad, I believe. They've put a couple homes in there.
Okay. Go ahead.
This is for the new construction. The service will be entering off of Charity Hill Road.
Yes. Not too far off the big old.
Okay, yep, yep.
They believe they're putting a driveway and, I believe, three homes? Could be four? Could be.
A road.
Correct, four homes, okay.
Questions?
It's pretty straightforward as far as I'm saying.
Go ahead. No, I mean, that's my question.
Okay.
Just the four homes that are, that have been, I guess, approved by the building inspector on Charity Hill Road. So this has been moved, a telephone pole, I think just shifted over a little bit, and then from there it'll run onto our lot into one ground.
Okay. Make a motion? Make a motion to approve National Grid, the pole on Charity Hill Road, the new pole?
I'll second that.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, sir.
We'll make sure that it's over to the rest of the.
Visitors' comments? Visitors? Okay. New business, discussion on vacancies on the master plan steering committee. I know that they were looking to bring down the number of people on the committee.
So we just had Devin and Owen Rudd has resigned from the committee, so I just, it's on here, just to accept their resignation, and you can start posting to fill it. I haven't heard anything about them wanting to bring down the number, but I just wanted the board to know that two members have resigned from the committee.
They have been suggesting a smaller number. There's thirteen designated, and eleven would be easier to get the quorons through on, but that would be a different issue. We addressed that phone in the past. Did we? Yeah. So we're eleven now? Yeah. Okay.
Oh, you're right. That's a good point. So this is two people from that eleven, that's two people resigning.
So now we're down to nine.
That's it? So I'd recommend somebody give me a motion to accept their resignation.
No. Make a motion to, for the master plan steering committee to accept the two, Owen and Devin's resignation from that committee.
I'll second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote to approve mowing contract for the cemetery commission to Lori Creveer. Anybody here to speak about that?
Paula here.
Looking right at her.
Right.
So we sent out the scope of services to three different businesses, and Lori Creveer was the only one to respond. And they have had the contract probably for the last four or five years. And if you look at their bid, their bid is the same as it was last year. They didn't go up in the amount. So the cemetery commission met and opened up the bids and recommending to the selectmen to accept the bid of Lori Creveer. I think it's for twenty four thousand nine ninety nine, which is the same bid as last year.
It's listed as twenty four thousand nine hundred.
Yep.
But we'll find the ninety nine. Well, we could amend it right now. All right, we'll leave it.
It's twenty five in the budget, so this is perfect.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
And so the cemetery commission has no issues whatsoever excepting it?
No, no.
Okay. I'll move to, forward the contract to Lori Creveer to mow at the Hardwick Cemetery.
In common area.
In common area.
Fiscal year places.
So moved.
All right. Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You could ask a question?
Sure.
Uh, do you, we're basically down to two members on our board trying to do the cemetery. So we're kind of looking for, hoping that you have other people fill this third position, or possibly have a couple more people that'd be interested in helping. It's a volunteer position that pays nothing, and it takes quite a bit of work to do it all.
So we're, you're asking us to go to the volunteer closet and?
Or?
Well, I know sometimes the town clerk used to keep lists of people that were interested or looking to help out, you know?
Yeah, and sometimes it comes in on the census and?
So I figured I'd just put in our two bits there, and we're doing what we can, but there's only so much we can do, and because of our fiscal, what we have, we only have so much money, we only have so much time.
Were only two of you for?
Yeah, and I work, so that means I can only do it either in the evenings or on the weekend, and if the weather means it's raining, it means nothing gets done.
How many seats normally on the commission?
So I've been three for a while.
Three? Okay, so you're just missing one, essentially.
Benny Hanson resigned.
Well, if you can find somebody, I mean, you'd be, traditionally, you'd be sending a letter asking us to appoint somebody who you like.
If we can find someone.
But we'll all look together.
Okay.
Doesn't pay anything.
Good one.
A ten.
A lot of people think we get paid and don't understand why we can't return the phone calls during the middle of the day when I'm at work and I can't. You know what that's about. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Discussion and vote on special event for vintage softball game on June the seventh, two thousand and twenty five at one P M.
Yes, we came with a poster.
This is a poster of the event, old time baseball. It's Hardwick playing the Westfield Wheelman from Westfield, Massachusetts.
They'll be in antique period garb. Yeah, vintage garb.
It's free. And we'd like to have hot dogs and popcorn, which are traditional to baseball games, served.
Get to watch me embarrass myself. Yeah. Can we keep that hanging up here?
Sure. Great.
Yeah.
They did get their signatures, and Dr. Ma is here for the board help.
Dr. Ma is here for the board help. So, nothing's ever easy. So the library organized a hot dog vendor for serving hot dogs at the game. They apparently backed out once they discovered that the library wouldn't guarantee them five hundred bucks sales. So they had to switch to Mimi's. Mimi's has filled out an application, but there's some minor technical issue with it about how they're going to do the hot dogs and which kind of permit it is. The fee is the same for Mimi's, so we're fine with that. I'm happy to sign off conditionally on it. I have to speak with the proprietor of Mimi's tomorrow to guarantee we understand how they're going to do the process, if we have the right permit for it. Is to say it's all a technicality that I think is not really critical to proceeding with the event.
Okay.
The board wishes me to sign off on the board of help line for the event, I'm willing to go ahead and do that now with the understanding of the contingency which is assumed to progress just fine.
Okay.
No issues.
Thank you, Doctor.
Did you need me to? Sorry.
Make a motion. Make a motion to approve the special event for the vintage softball game on June seventh, two thousand and twenty five at one P M.
I'll second.
Further discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
I'm gonna do so good.
Yes, you are. And so everyone come, one o'clock.
She's gonna win the home run derby.
Okay, sewer project update?
Can I have that?
Mr. Chair, if that's fine? Okay, the update on the sewer project. The overall contract price is twenty seven million, seven hundred and twenty eight thousand, five hundred dollars. And it's three projects. It's Project One, Hardwick Road Pumping Station. Project Two A, which is Wheelwright Wastewater Pollution Control Facility, and Project Two B, which is Gilbertville Wastewater Control Facility. And each one of those projects, the first project, Project One, which is Hardwick Road, that is eighty-eight percent complete. The Project Two A, which is Wheelwright, that's ninety-one percent complete. And the Project Two B, which is Gilbertville, that's forty-nine percent complete. So overall, they're at sixty-nine percent complete. And they have a contingency fund of one million, nine hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, which goes to upgrades and certain things. And some of that is going for a potential, we haven't approved it yet, but it's an office facility at Gilbertville, a module office facility. It's not like a trailer. It's a building, it's going to be laid on a foundations, it's going to be a separate structure. And so out of that contingency, we've allocated about one point two million dollars. We have remaining six hundred thousand and some change, which, one of the pending things is a wastewater treatment facility.
Pumping station and Wheelwright.
The Wheelwright, which is also in the process. It was alternate number one, and at mid-time, it was nine hundred and something thousand dollars. And they re-engineered it, they value engineered it, and now it's down to about six hundred and something thousand. So they've saved over three hundred thousand dollars doing that. Like I said, it hasn't been approved yet, it's in the final things, but that's where the contingency money and stuff like that is going. And that's pretty much the update right now. Do you have any questions?
So, we're thirty-eight percent not complete. What's the dollar value of that?
The dollar value is remaining would be eight million, seven hundred and two thousand dollars.
So you have six hundred thousand free contingency on eight million dollars yet?
No, we have one point nine right now on eight million dollars.
I thought I heard you say you committed that to an office, though.
No. I'd say the office and other, other, other change orders that are in here is one point two million of that one point nine million contingency.
So that leaves you, the balance that's available as a true contingency, because the one point two is committed now, right?
It's not a hundred percent committed, no. They haven't signed off on it, they haven't approved it. But there's, there's been proposed change orders.
I guess my point is, I'm just asking you, if you commit the one point two, and you have eight million left to build?
Yep.
You're left with six hundred thousand as contingency to cover any problems in the eight million. So you're less than ten percent.
Yes.
And is that a good way to go, or should you really wait to commit on the office until you close out the eight million and know that you don't need any more money?
I would say no, because you're going right to the end of the contract, and they're going to be done, and then they're going to be waiting for a facility that's going to take time to build, because it's going to be all prefabbed in a factory and then shipped. So it's not going to be built on site. So this is something that is a fairly, not a long, long lead item. I can find out what that lead item will be, but it's not something you can just readily take off the shelf.
No, I get that. My, that's a little bit different topic. I'm just saying that you're left with six hundred thousand to cover eight million, and I would just say then, what, managing that eight million pretty tight then is of importance, right? Because you don't have a lot of room now to cover a problem, because you're spending the one point two.
Well, for the most part, they've gone past the point of any unforeseen conditions that might cause any additional proposed change orders or, or things like that. So they're past that stage of unforeseen conditions. So, and they have this money. So they're projecting that this project will be a hundred percent complete by December of this year, if that helps.
So. Also, too, is the contractors are working on this project, they know we don't have any extra money, so we have, if, if, what you're saying, we have that six hundred thousand dollars, that's it. So they know that. So like, to Mr. Taker's point, they know that needs to take us through to the end of December. So we do meet weekly on this project, and then monthly, the engineers and the project consultants do come out here. So we are on top of it. So we're not, to Mr. Taker's point, we're not anticipating any big changes.
Yeah, I know, you've got professionals on the job. Usually they give you a risk register or risk report to say what the probability is of running into an overrun on that eight million, and by line item, you know where the big money is. That's just a fun conversation, that's all.
Oh, fun, yeah.
Glad you're having fun.
So does that mean that it should be done by the end of the year? And, so that's a good thing. It's all finally coming.
The end of the calendar year.
Yes.
Yeah, I've been bouncing off the walls, because I thought it was the end of the fiscal year. In no way, it's going to be done in a month, but.
This year.
I got trained today, so.
Okay. That's the update. I'll continue giving updates, and we'll put the information online, too. So if you want to see it, you're more than welcome to, you know, review it. If you have any further questions, or you, or you'd like me to ask some of these questions for clarification, I'm glad to do that.
Okay, everything? Discussion and vote on purchase and sale agreement for Calvin Page Building.
Mr. Chair, Town Council has, you proposed changes that the group has suggested, so they have that, and I have not had a chance, well, actually, they haven't responded yet, so I don't have anything for you tonight. So that's where that is, but I know Mr. Johnson.
Do you have anything for us today?
Hi. What, I, we have the modified L D A. The L D A, when we got the purchase and sale agreement, it had the historic preservation restriction, and it had the L D A on it, which, the land development agreement, which is a very long agreement that we all talked about, was not good for the town, not good for us. It's more of an arrangement between a developer and a landlord, and you guys don't want to be a landlord, and we are not a developer. It seemed like, so removing the L D A is probably much more momentous, a monumental thing to do, because you guys want that for future things, to have some sort of restrictions on what, you know, as other buildings are bought, what you guys can control. We felt that it's, and had the discussion that it, and I'm not sure, Jeff, you had a chance to see the, the L D A attachment to it, but what we did is, we offered up a change to this eleven page, twelve, thirteen page, to modify, because what it has is, it has exit clauses, and we wanted to give the town a stronger conveyance, which guarantees that if we, you know, we can't sell it, we can't hold on to it for ten years and do nothing. So we added a conveyance clause in there as well, and I, I'd like, I know Town Council's looking at it, I would really like it if you guys could actually, and the reason I want, because I can't talk to people as a group unless I'm here. So I think it's real important to take a look at the, the L D A and understand our concern with the original version of it, and that it's not good for the town, it's, it's a burden on the town, and it's not good for us. We kind of expressed that it wasn't something we wanted, we were willing to do some conveyances that guarantees the town's, gets the town building back. If we do nothing, if we try to sell it, we can't. We're a nonprofit that, that will own it, and we are committed to restoring it, following all the historic preservation restrictions, making a community use building for the town at no benefit to us. We are just a group of people that have put together funding and put together the energy to try to get this done, and we really would like to own it sooner than later, so that we're not suddenly worried about trying to put a roof on in, in the winter, or painting it in the winter. So closing date won't be set until we've signed the P and S. So the P and S is fine. The, the historic preservation restriction is fine. I don't know whether or not you guys are obligated to run it past the historic commission, or, and also someone mentioned, does the, correct me if I'm wrong, what is the state commission that has to approve the sale of a building?
The Attorney General?
Yeah, does the attorney weigh in some point later on? Are we going to suddenly realize there's a three-month delay for the Attorney General approval?
So that unfortunately falls on the town and not on you, so.
But so, but if it's a three-month delay for you, then that's a three-month delay for you. Yeah. So I urge that you physically, if Justine's okay with giving you guys copies of our modified, it's, it's good words that guarantee what we're going to do, it has that conveyance in there that we've talked about, where we guarantee that we can't sell it, we, if we don't start right away, we have to give it back, if we don't finish the project, we have to give it back, all that stuff. So I think that it's, it's critical that it's not just lawyers talking to lawyers. I mean, we've given it a copy to our lawyer, and he hasn't, other than the fact that he's excited that we've made it simpler. We just gave it a change in the, I don't know what the, what the correct word is, it's the, the completion measurement is.
Yeah, I mean, there were a lot of blanks, and, and it was kind of heading in this direction of a landlord developer, like a lease-out tenant or something document that?
Kind of a commercial.
Yeah, which we understood from all the conversations that the town, you know, was, had a concern that what the, we said we would do would be done, that the building would be protected, the envelope would be, would be taken care of priority, because that basically stabilized the building for long term. And so in the modification to L D A, we put wording in that the termination point, when we receive a certificate of completion, would be when we've completed the work that we've pulled permits for. And then the, the official of the town representing those disciplines, plumbing, electrical, or, you know, construction bill out, would, it would be their professional opinion whether the completion was made, right? So it would be all objectively measured through the permits. And at that point, the attachment of the town to the project would end. And, and in part of the P and S in closing, like Warren said, the, we proposed what we thought the town really would want, and we proposed it in the structure of the L D A, and that is that the, a deed conveyance would be put on the property that would, you know, if we abandoned it, it became structurally in disrepair, then the town would either, would tell us, like, you got to fix that, or we're taking the building back. And we agreed to that. And if the, if we said, oh, we just want to let you know, we just sold the building to, you know, Walmart or somebody, the conveyance would say, well, too bad you did that, because you can't do that, because if you try to sell it, or if you do sell it, the town can claw the building back through the conveyance on the deed and say, no, it's ours again. And that, the, that would be condition, that would survive past any of us or, or the organization. It would be forever in the control of the town to exercise that conveyance or not. So we thought that was really what the town really wanted to achieve. A building in good shape has a solid historical restoration and image, and it is a facility for community use, and it can never be sold, and it can never go into disrepair without going back to the town. So, you know, without having direct hands-on, you have a, you know, a sleeping kind of clause here to protect the town, so.
And it's just, I think that whether or not, and I'm not blaming the lawyer, but it just seemed like the wrong document from the very beginning. A land development agreement technically is an agreement between a landlord and a contractor. I, you own a plaza, and I'm going to put in my store, I have certain rules I have to follow. If I don't follow those rules, you penalize me. You guys don't want to stand at that building all day long and say, I wouldn't scrape the paint that way, I'd scrape it up and down, or I would do this. We're going to, we're going to follow the rules of all the, the building inspector, the plumbing, the electrical, and make sure that we're complying and all that stuff. But it, this just is a babysitting project that you guys don't want, and nor do we. And from the beginning, it's just the wrong document. And I wished we had put a stipulation in, in our offer to our R F P to say, we accept everything, we'll give you this much money, we need to remove the L D A. But I think what we've done to it?
I think it's fixable. I think, knowing the intention, I think the words are close to being done. It's a matter of the, your, the town's attorney, understanding what has been said and making sure.
And I think it's the clean copy, we gave you a clean copy, we also gave you a red line, so that they can see the original stuff with all the changes. And so, once your legal counsel gets back to you, it would be really nice if they said, it's perfect, these guys did a great job. We still, I think there's, like, as Stan said, there's a lot of blanks, you know, like our, even in one we did, we didn't put our lawyer's name in on, so, like, even on the P and S, there's still places that we need to fill in. So I just urge that we have, as quick as possible, get the lawyer to get it to you guys. If you, if he, he or she, she suggests, makes some suggestions, I want to make sure that she understands that it's not a plaza, and we're not a developer.
Well, most importantly, if the words, getting past kind of the L D A, just are the words properly causing kind of a mutual agreeable situation?
Right.
And, and I, I think that, you know, we went at this quickly and strongly and trumped up a lot of interest, and kind of don't want this thing to kind of age on the vine now, like?
Right.
We're going to potentially lose interest we have, and, you know, we want to keep it moving, so.
It's hard to convince the contractors to.
Yeah, I think we're all on the same. We'd all let the lawyer screw up the deal, I'll say.
That's what I would like, that's, I guess that's what I want them to ask it, don't let the lawyer screw it up.
So, as you guys know, legally, we have to include your land development agreement, because it was in the R F P, so legally, we have to. But like I said to Mr. Johnson when we spoke on the phone last week, was, send me what you have issues with, which he did. I'll get it over to our Town Council, which I did, so we can definitely meet in the middle. It's not, it's not going to be.
So it's in the hands of Council now?
Yeah, yes.
And we can get copies of that, and then we can keep up to.
Yeah, and I'll make sure that you guys also see, like, this stuff from Council, too, like, what they work on. You'll have everything, I swear.
Good.
And just keep putting us on the agenda until we can walk in here and sign papers, I think. And I don't know, when we do a P and S, and everybody's signing, and everybody's happy, I don't know how quickly we can do a passing, because the only thing we really need for a passing? need for a passing is a title and a legal document. We are not needing to get a financing proven, it's only not, you know, we would like to close as quickly as possible after the PNS.
Get going.
There's nothing holding us up.
We all feel that way.
Yeah.
And most importantly is that, once we have a date for a closing, then I can talk to contractors, because we literally want to get started.
Okay. Sooner rather than later.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if it was a Walmart, there'd be like parking all over the place. We need parking.
Just pay for the town council.
They can suggest it before.
You do realize you're on camera here.
I do.
China has a question?
I just, I had read the contract, too, and I was confused, and it would have been our town council that did it. They went between being under, I don't know, the jurisdiction of Hardwick Historical Society and the State Historical Society, and I didn't know, they mentioned one...
The restriction, the historic preservation. It's your own preservation, it's not a state or a federal one, like, and I...
It's a town.
It's just a town one.
They had mentioned that, though, the state one in your contract, I read the contract.
We did.
Whoever put it in there, yeah.
Yeah, like, because I think maybe, I don't know, what does the RFP have? It just says the historic preservation restriction. I don't know if it indicates state.
I think they're following the LDA.
They said Hardwick, and then it said state.
I don't think the RFP said state. I believe it was just, yeah, Historical Commission.
Because our Historical Commission, would they, because that's more complex, that's the one that has to go, the one that has to go to state is much more complex.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
The Historical Commission that, Jen, who is the one, like, when Paul did the, did that document, which laid out, like, it can't be a CVS or a Walmart, is that, was that a local decision, or was that, was that at the state level? Do you recall that?
I think that was local.
Okay, and it's the local?
But it was something I noticed, so maybe it's, you know...
I mean, the one that's in there is fine. It's very strict, which is what we want it to be. We want, we want excuses not to do terrible things to that building.
Okay.
Thanks.
Got it.
Like what I'm hearing.
So, I mean, we asked for it, from the very beginning, we wanted historic preservation restriction on it, as you, as the town did put in the RFP, but we always wanted that, because...
We didn't want Walmart.
We don't, yeah.
And like you said, there's holes in it, we still have to fill, like, on both sides?
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, that's all that I would need.
And should we have our lawyer look at it? We are having our lawyer look at it.
We are, yeah.
Just in the normal fashion.
Correct.
It makes sense.
Yeah, I think it's with you guys now, we're just waiting to...
So, I ask this as an administrative question. Can you guys, you know, your next meeting is in two weeks, or two weeks from yesterday. Can we assume that might be the day that we, lawyers have all agreed on something, and there's a piece of paper on that table? Or can you have a special session, once lawyers have given you stuff, can we, can you call a session saying, Tuesday afternoon, we have all the lawyers agreed, can you come in and sign papers?
Your lawyer is ready to go?
What's that?
Your lawyer is ready to go.
He's...
More ready than you guys are.
He's at the point, he's at the same point that all of us are right now. He's, he's not ahead of us or behind us. We're all...
No, no, I'm just saying, is it, if it's, if it's our council that's slowing us up, then I think we'll kick their, if your lawyer is ready to go, that's what I need.
And I know we can't do this until the six of us or whatever are sitting in a room together, so I will follow your lead, just...
I keep communicating, whatever I have updates.
Call him every day.
You said, "Don't close down," now you're changing it, too.
We charge us every six minutes.
If we have an update...
Yeah, of course, I'll keep communicating.
We can have a meeting. Meeting requires a 48-hour notice.
Got it.
So, hope we can be flexible on that.
Yeah, okay. Excellent.
Get it going, right, whatever. We associate here from council. An agreeable deal from council.
The P, I mean, the PNS is fine, exactly the way it is. It just has that LDA, which is now beautiful. It's a beautiful thing, we would give it to you.
Beautiful.
Good.
And it has that conveyance on it, which I think is real important. There's a whole separate amendment on the end of the LDA, is the conveyance that we don't talk about.
All right.
All right?
All right.
Thank you, guys, for hearing us.
Yeah.
Thanks for doing the project.
Yeah. Hopefully, we'll have an answer for your feeling.
Thanks. Call me anytime.
I'll make good news, thanks.
Do you want to say as a member of the finance committee?
No.
Okay.
Why? Is there a finance committee discussion?
Well, we're on top of budget now.
Yeah, you know, we...
Why not?
As a, as a committee member? Not as a quorum, but just as a human being in the room?
You can't be a quorum by yourself.
I guess I'm somewhat obligated to, if that's what you're asking. I don't, I don't want to be...
I don't mean to obligate you.
I do, just kidding.
No, well...
Am I signing, am I signing off?
No, exactly.
Just listening, just listening.
Yes, listen.
I'll start this off.
All right, sounds good.
After our last meeting, I started having second thoughts. I had buyer's remorse, I suppose. And I decided that Marty needs another guy sooner rather than later, and that Ryan needs to be brought on as full-time, because it's something that we promised him last year. So, I think the work is there, I think the need is there. It changes the numbers. Jen and Justine have spent lots of hours going over this. The numbers have changed, they've discovered things, some serious changes. So, before us, we have a balanced budget. We went over this with Mark Korzick, who's with the finance committee, and he's going back to talk to his chair about it. But I would urge us to go with this newer budget. The budget will change right up until town meeting.
Okay, Mr. Chair. The issue I kind of have with this right now is, we voted on this, it's a select board. And in order for you to reconsider this, I've mentioned that that should be on the agenda, to reconsider and reopening the budget. Okay?
It's discussion and vote.
On fiscal year budget, under old business.
Right.
And we've already done that.
And I'm saying that the budget changes right up until the last minute. So us voting on the budget doesn't cast it in stone.
Well, I would, I would disagree with that, in that statement, okay? In the sense that we did, as a board and finance, all together, agree on a budget. And there's nothing wrong with reopening a budget, okay?
Good.
But it's not properly posted, and it's not brought to the town that way. Okay? So there's people out in the audience that might not know that we're actually going to open the budget tonight and make changes.
Mr. Chair?
Take care of this.
Mr. Chairman?
And I did make these, I made this information available, and somehow maybe got lost in translation.
Made what, information available?
The whole wording of this for the agenda, the requeue, the reopening of the budget. It has to be listed under new business, because old business was done. We voted on it, we all voted. That happened.
Right.
And so that's old business, it's completed. So, in order to open the budget, we have to list it under a new business item, new agenda, saying, "We want to reopen the business, the budget."
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I disagree with that. There's no such thing as reopening the budget, because the only people that can close the budget are the legislative body, the voters at town meeting. So like, I, literally, which I don't think should ever happen, but five minutes we're walking into town meeting, the three of you can have a meeting and vote to defund assessors' expense, assessors' expense, for whatever reason.
Can be changed on town meeting.
Nothing personal.
Right, I'm just, so there's no, there's no state law or anything that rules you from...
There's proper posting of a meeting.
It is properly posted.
No, it's not. It's under old business, and we voted...
It is old business.
And we voted on it, to approve it. I'm just, I'm just voicing my concern, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
Now, you mentioned, Eric, that you found changes.
Yeah.
Significant changes? Was that your wording?
Yeah.
What are they?
Do you want to start, Mr. Chair?
One more, other things. The expenses for the enterprise fund are supposed to be paid half and half, half the town and half enterprise fund. And these folks found out that we've been paying full free. So, changing that gives us a big lump of money. The insurance accounts have been looked at, and there were some figures there that help us come to a different amount of money. We've got the overlay, which I would like the assessor to...
The overlay surplus.
Yeah.
So the assessors have an overlay account to deal with exemptions and abatements. We've, it's not ever in the budget, it's put on the recap, though, to be raised in taxation. That has to be saved for, in a fiscal year, for any abatements and exemptions come in. There is time when we have money left over, and at a certain point, the assessors, on their own recognizance, can declare an overlay surplus by taking any money that we don't basically need. All abatements and exemptions are accounted for, and we can do a surplus. The select board can request that, too. What happens with that is, it becomes used for a specific thing, and if it is not all used, or not used at all, it then goes to free cash. So this year, there seemed to be a need, because the budget seemed to be so tight, that the assessors did declare that overlay surplus. It was $62,300 and something dollars. So we, so on the budget, we use that to reduce the budget by that much. We can raise an appropriate X amount of money in taxation, and then to make up the budget, we can use that $62,000 of overlay surplus. So that's how we were able to get under two and a half and have a nice, healthy budget.
And in this budget, this new budget, this adjusted budget, there's money for stabilization, some money to go into the bank account savings.
That would be, that would be on the articles, not the, not the specific budget that we're working on. The budget is what it's going to take, what we estimate it's going to take to run the town next year. The articles are money we already have, and so we're just using that to, to, you know, if we have free cash, then we'll put it into stabilization account or something like that.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead. The money you're speaking of, Jen?
Yeah.
The $62,300, we allocated $42,000 of that to stabilization fund and $20,000 to free cash, in the budget that we voted on. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, Bill, my understanding is, this can change. We can, we can look at it, again, right up until we get into the town meeting. And in fact, in the town meeting, it can be changed, if somebody makes a motion to change something.
When, once it's open on the board?
So, right now, discussion, right now, I don't think we're ready to take a vote, to tell you the truth. But I think this is still in flux, and we can, we can make changes as necessary as time goes on. I don't see the, I don't see the issue. I really don't see the issue.
It's a posting thing, for you.
Well, it's not just for me, it's for the public.
Okay, I only speak for myself.
Okay.
I don't know what everybody in the...
Well, you represent the public.
I understand that, too.
Right.
I'm sworn. This is my 15th year as a select.
Right, I get it, I get it. This isn't like questioning your authority.
All right.
This is proper agenda, that's all.
Let me say that if you want, we'll post the selectments meeting for eight o'clock in the morning at the town meeting, and we'll go over this.
I suggest we have a meeting next Monday. We just schedule a meeting, we reopen the budget, and we invite the finance committee, make sure they're here, so we all are on the same page, and I think that would be in the best interest of everybody.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you think it's okay if I just give our newest selectman a little background, a little bit?
Okay.
He's been around.
Not, he's new to me. So, what we had done since the last board meeting is we, we've had some staffing changes, we have some other things going on. So what we did is we might have looked at all of our debt, our debt exclusions and loans, going back to 2014. And some of those numbers weren't entirely accurate, so we were able to make some adjustments. And actually, going forward, you know, next year, we're going to make sure that they're, like, they have, we have separate lines for each debt and our interests, our principal and our interest, and every one of them is going to have their own line, so it's extremely transparent. At least this year, what we were able to do is we were able to be like, well, now we have more of an accurate figure of what it actually cost, because to Mr. Chairman's point, there was money that was, it was all put on the town that should have been on the sewer, of the sewer enterprise account. So we were able to look at the sewer enterprise, make sure their numbers were accurate, and compare it to the town's operating budget, make sure our numbers were accurate. And I would really like to thank the assessor for spending hours with me she probably didn't want to spend.
And she's here now, long after normally, when she goes home.
You've got your expense account back.
Yeah, yeah.
But, all right, that, you see, that's what I'm looking for, is an explanation of what changed. I, I see no, I have no issue with meeting again on Monday.
Okay.
Just not at six o'clock.
Right, six thirty.
Six thirty ain't good, mate. Six o'clock's a hard one.
And we'll keep the agenda three, just budget.
Just budget, just one agenda item.
Reopening the budget.
We're not going to vote on it. The townsfolk vote on it.
We're going to approve...
We present something to the town.
Right, we're going to vote on that, and which we've already done, what we were going to present. So in order for that to happen, we need to reopen.
It's already open.
I will pass them on to my...
If you can find me a town agenda somewhere in Massachusetts where it says reopen...
We voted on this, Justine, did we not?
But you can vote on anything.
Did we not vote on this?
Of course you did, but you can vote on whatever you want.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I'm just pointing out. Okay, that's it. So, and also, I've asked for, where is the revenue going to come from? For a full-time clerk? Stuff like that. I've sent an email, and I would like that information, Bill. And then I don't recall last year promising Ryan anything. We didn't have money, we cut the position back from full-time to part-time. Our town, if you look at all the surrounding communities, we don't warrant a full-time clerk based on population and the job description and the amount of work that's necessary. I mean, we're at 2,800 to 3,000 in population. The number's right around 5,000, 6,000 people, where it warrants a full-time clerk. So I'm just wondering, has the job increased? Like, what has changed that warrants full-time? Because we don't have revenue to support full-time.
Well, we'll have to talk about that, too.
Right, so we'll gladly discuss it.
Okay.
That's all.
Good.
So, make a motion and table this for next week.
You want a meeting Monday?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Monday, you want a meeting at 6:30?
I'll make a motion to make a meeting, to have a meeting next Monday at 6:30 PM at the town hall.
I'll second that, just as long as it's at 6:30 in that sense.
Okay, no problem.
And Justine can afford it.
All in favor?
Oh, I'm going to call him, yeah.
Maybe we'll have...
And please include the finance committee.
Great, I'm going to call the chairman.
Maybe we'll have the information on the page.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys. See you.
We're not done if you guys want to hang.
No, I don't need more. I don't need you around.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
I want his compliment.
I don't blame you.
I just want to make sure you don't come while you're having another.
Thank you, Jen.
You will. I will make myself a little prayer.
I won't pay.
Baba, I, you will.
Okay. We have a letter just, well, that's a signature thing, so we're not quite there. Meeting minutes. Approval of minutes, the tenth of March and the twenty-fourth of March.
I'm just going to put this up. I didn't have time to review the meeting minutes just because of my schedule, but I'm sure you two did. You guys don't have any issues with it?
I can't, I can't vote on them. I wasn't here for any either of those meetings.
I can tape, I can put them on the next meeting agenda if you're more comfortable.
Well, it's next week. I mean, it's up to you.
That's fine. It'll give me time to read them.
You mean, I read them and nobody, neither of you?
Before the record, we had two sets of meeting minutes.
It has been busy.
It has.
It has. It's been terrible.
No whining, no whining.
No, no whining.
Uh, what else we got?
Table that for next week, too.
There's a town, the town administrator report.
Oh, good.
Look, look at the audience.
Oh, my God, okay.
They're nationwide up there.
I can talk all day, I want to.
California, aren't you?
Oh, cool. Say hello.
Hi, Sue.
So I've been in contact with the, uh, different contractors trying to work for the tree room behind Town Hall. Something that's not on here is today was the first day they've been doing the migration over to the dot gov emails. So there's been a few kinks today like mine, but that will all be sorting out. So eventually, I'm going to make sure that each of the three of you have town emails. So you're not using your personal emails for town business. I just need to get everything situated with the people that we just migrated and then I'm going to work on the elected officials. And there's also some town employees that don't have town emails. So they will also get town emails. Our security cameras at Town Hall are being installed on May twenty-eighth. As you know, working with Town Council and the page building purchase and sale. Met with the treasurer, executive assistant and assessor are putting together a billing schedule. Have, I met with the treasurer collector, treasurer consultant and assessor on, we've been meeting pretty much regularly on those issues going on in the treasurer's office, which I've tried to keep you guys updated on, things that we're finding on a pretty, pretty regular basis that we're working to correct, so.
Landmines.
Patience and understanding. Just asking for a little patience with that. Submitted for the opioid settlement funds and working on a debt and, and as you know, we're working on the debt and loan numbers for accuracy and financial forecasting. Held our bi-weekly financial management planning meeting with the assessor, treasurer, collector and accountant. I also met with Harry Commerford from the planning board on the Kearsarge solar lease. So that will be on your next agenda to review a lease for Kearsarge. Going over department performance evaluations with department heads, scheduling agent flow. We tried to schedule an interview for one vacant highway department position. Unfortunately, that person has found another job. We held interviews for the police detective position with a police lieutenant, police sergeant, a member of the new branch, new select board. We interviewed two internal candidates. We're currently holding open enrollment for employees for their insurance. We had Maya and Boston Mutual out to meet with the employees because there are some planned changes this year. It was a good, I don't, I don't believe in the past, it's, there's been a real open enrollment here. So that is also something we're trying to institute moving forward. I met with the school superintendent on, with their, and their insurance providers in preparation for FY twenty-seven. So we're not even at FY twenty-six yet, but we're already preparing for twenty-seven. I finished my MCPPO renewal that I have to do every three years to serve as the town's chief procurement officer.
Did you?
Oh, Massachusetts Certified Public Purchasing Official.
Thank you.
Sorry.
There you go. I always ask.
Attended the Massachusetts Rural and Western Communities Conference with Selectman Tinker. I attended the Massachusetts Municipal Association Personnel and Labor Relations Policy Committee, where we actually discussed uses for the opioid settlement funds. The annual town meeting warrant has been posted. The annual, annual report has been sent to the printer. I had my Wear Radio interview where I talked about town meeting and our finances. Tended today the virtual forum on public records and open meeting law. I want to recognize Marty Gazifka because everything looked absolutely fantastic in preparation for Memorial Day in dealing with this sewer break and everything.
On Sunday.
Yeah.
He came in to, to fix the broken sewer.
So I want to recognize him for everything he does for the town. Important dates, annual town meeting is June seventh, nine A.M. The old-time softball game is also June seventh at one P.M. at Roach Field. And then I just listed my vacation in September. And something that also came up today was the time capsule, the town clerk and the schools have been, have been talking about opening a time capsule from nineteen seventy-five. But that's, you can discuss that later.
Nineteen seventy-five.
Yeah. What about you?
I was getting ready to buy my land.
Oh, really? Wow. I was still in high school. I hate to make you feel old.
No, no, I was, I was finishing college. But that took a long time.
I was nothing. But that's my report today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The time, go ahead. What's next?
It's like we're not.
Roundtable. Do you like to start off?
If you'd like me to.
Sure.
All right, I've got a couple of different things, but the first thing is I'd like to bring up and advise Jeff Schaff about, he's, he's on the planning board.
Yes.
As an alternate. And I personally, I, not personally, but he should go to state ethics and get advisement on that because it's conflicting to be on two boards. You need to be a special town employee. Okay? So they will advise you and tell you the role of what you got to do. I think you should resign, and this is why I think you should resign. You have plenty of experience in the government. You hold this position as a, as an alternate. And I think we, as a board, we point, we point an alternate to that, somebody who wants to learn a younger, like a younger generation or a younger person so they can gain experience and stuff like that. That's just my recommendation on that. But otherwise, before you, you actually jump from board to board, you need to go through state ethics and they'll advise you how to do that. And I'm not sure if that information has been brought to you prior, but I believe it has.
We can, I can give you the number and we can figure that out. Do you want to make a follow-up?
Right, well, just to answer his concerns, my understanding is that the planning board position is a special town employee. I think that was the proper term. And that a, that I can hold both at the same time. Now, having said that, if there's another person that's willing to step up and take that position, I'm more willing to step down from the associate planning board member. The issue has been, I believe, I'm the only one. There's two positions available. There's nobody else to fill that position right now. That's why I've said that I would stay on. They were desperate to have somebody stay on because there are, and the only time I get involved is during hearings where, for instance, a couple of people have to refuse themselves where they need that extra vote. That's the only time I get involved. I don't get involved with the, with any of the regular planning board meetings. I just get involved with those certain hearings. I am more than willing to check through because that, I ran for, back then it was the Board of Selectment, back in two thousand and three, I believe it was. And I was told back then by the Attorney General's Office that this, that I could hold both positions. And that, and in that time, I was on the planning board as a full-fledged member.
All I'm recommending is you contact state ethics, speak to somebody there and they will advise you to become a special town employee. Because now you're a member of the Select Board. It's a little bit different.
No, I, I understand that. And the only reason why I'm staying on is because they need somebody in that position.
Well, we can put it out to the town and say, we're looking for people that might be interested in the planning board as an alternate.
Right. I have no issue with that.
And if I can put my aura in.
Yeah.
I've served on the planning board about as long as I've served as a selectman. And I always kept them separate. I don't think there's, they're in conflict, but it was kind of like a division of power or something. And I thought it was, I thought it was a bad idea to be on both. I know Harry Commerford was on both.
On both, yes.
And he ran a full rig that way. So, I mean, I, I wouldn't do it just for being complicated. And I always thought it should be, I know when I was planning board, the Select Board, well, the chair of the Board of Selectment put out a memo to everybody. Said all minutes from all meetings of all commissions and committees and everything will be sent to the Select Board. And this is before there was a lot of, and I just, I was happy to circular file it. Don't say, whatever. Those were good days. But yes, I mean, if, if you could look, these days, there might be trouble. So you better.
Yeah, I can, I certainly can check in.
You don't want to.
No, thank you.
Sure.
Trying to tell us who you are, but.
Maybe that's it.
So, I mean, that's, I'm just bringing it up. So, one, I think it would be good for, you know, somebody young or somebody who's interested in learning this to come in. Because it's an ideal spot because it's an alternate. It's not like they're there every day, stuff like that. It would be a good learning opportunity to somebody.
Like I said, the only reason why.
No, I totally understand and I get it.
They, they were begging me to stay on.
Well, and we're begging you to stay on here.
And this is going to take a lot of your time.
Yeah, no. And as we saw this tonight, I ran into my first scheduling conflict with it, so.
Bill's just saying that because he's really sick of me calling him to complain.
Complain about what?
The treasurer's office is a mess, I don't think.
And one other thing, the, the copier. If we can do something to get rid of the copier by June thirtieth, we can buy another one through Capital. The money's there. We just go through Capital and we'll save ourselves twenty-eight hundred dollars a month.
How complicated will it be to plug it in?
Plug in a copier?
Well, I, it's probably set up in the net, right? I mean, it's with the new telephone or what?
It, it shouldn't be that difficult in the sense that that machine will have a MAC address. Somebody will change it from the IT department.
So it's pro forma.
Yeah. It should be plug and play, literally.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So the idea is awaiting until July first when we have a new budget because there is no money in the current fiscal year budget for copier. And that also gives us time to do our research and find one that was going to stay with the town for a long time and it's going to be good and everything's going to be great. So after town meeting, that is my, that is my.
Every month that goes by costs the town twenty-eight hundred dollars.
We got rid of Paragus today.
This for a long time.
We got rid of Paragus today.
We have the money. It's capital. We can put it out or request for proposal. This is something we shouldn't be sitting on until July first. So I'm just mentioning it on the Select and Roundtable. It should be a priority because June, that's, I mean, by the time we do all this, that's two months. It's five thousand. We're talking about buying a copier that's eight thousand dollars.
So let's do our homework and find out.
I submitted a request for proposal that gave the specs on the machine and everything that the town hardware can easily do.
If I, I might not need even to do an RFP. I'm in the local state business and I'm looking at like, it's, it's on its, it's on its way out. Let me imagine that way.
That's, that's all.
Get some motion on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, let's start thinking in, in the sense, I know we're all busy. It's all budget time. I get it. But certain things where we can actually save, you saved on the four hundred today. So this is twenty-eight hundred dollars. Every month it's twenty-eight hundred dollars. Just think of that.
Yeah.
Today we saved four hundred a month. So that was today.
So that's all I have for Select and Roundtable.
Okay, thank God.
Right? That's it.
How about yourself, Sarah?
I don't have much of anything today.
All right.
I just wanted to say that, that our, it is very nice that we had our Memorial Day parade and ceremonies. I mean, a town of our size having something like that, granted, aren't that many, many people that participate in it? But it very much is something special for our town.
It is. It is. It's beautiful up on the Common. And I had me and helper polish the cannon and I sat there.
Seth.
Me and Seth sat there on my tailgate looking across the street, looking at that cannon and all you guys and it was green.
It's nice. It's nice. And ringing of the bell. It's nice.
Oh, yeah.
And always a really nice touch.
That's a good bill.
Yeah.
It's a wonderful tradition.
Yeah, yeah. And it's kind of a poignant day and I hesitate to wish people a happy Memorial Day.
Yeah.
Have a.
I tend to do that.
Memorial. Well, all right. I don't have any particular thing except to talk about Marty Gazifka saving the day again. And that's it for me.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you want to do the time capsule after town meeting or?
Yeah, what do you want to do with the time capsule? We'd have people there. I don't know. They'll start crashing chairs and everything to clear out. Do we open the time capsule at the end of the town meeting or do we find a place? There's some instructions on it. It's supposed to be in June of twenty twenty-five. So we could do it in a school setting. This was put in by the sixth graders.
Who are no longer at the elementary school.
Fifty, yeah. Right. This is what I learned today. The sixth graders are over in Darius.
I think my son's, yeah, they went up to the regional middle school.
You suffer those kids.
My son was one of the last classes that was at the elementary school in the sixth grade, so.
Well, what's your pleasure with the time capsule?
I think we could do it at the end of the town meeting. It's, it's convenient, to say the least.
There's a table right there, so.
Yeah. But you are, you are right. The people will be filing out of that town meeting once it's over.
Well, the moderator can make an announcement.
Right, and we can put it out there as well, like we're talking about right now. But, you know, at the end of the annual town meeting, we're going to be opening time capsule from nineteen seventy-five.
Right. So he can mention that just before he looks at me and says, Mr. Valhun, I said, I know that we dissolved this town meeting. So we'll do that.
All right. That sounds good.
All right.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
On the favor?
Just so you know, I stopped for guys to sign.
All right, then we'll hold off. Or can we can sign?
Yeah.
All right, we'll adjourn.
And you know, when there's a motion to adjourn and it gets seconded, there's no discussion.
None.
It just goes for a vote.
We're done.
Adjourned.
If you've moved to adjourn and there's no second, we'll just carry on.
Okay.
Or if you move to adjourn and you get a second.
Whatever your preference is. You want to carry on, you can carry on.
Well, I'm all right. It's just something I learned. I thought it was kind of, it's kind of interesting. Once the motion is made, you got to follow through.
So are you adjourned yet or no?
Are you going home yet?
You adjourned yet?
We're adjourned.
We're adjourned.
Okay.
All time, eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock.
And we sign that letter.